This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everyone. It is 7:30 PM. This is the August 13, 2020 work session of the Allendale Mayor and Council. Welcome to everyone who's joining via video and teleconference. We ask that you please mute your devices at this time so as not to distract from the business of the meeting. There'll be several opportunities for the public to be heard tonight, and we'll advise you of the appropriate times. So to get started, Michelle, if you can please read the Open Public Meeting Act announcement.
Sure. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. Meeting dates for the year are confirmed at the annual meeting, are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building, published in the record within the first 10 days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the July 31, 2020 sunshine notice was sent to the record, the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger, and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and borough website.
Great, thank you. And Michelle, if you can please conduct the roll call.
Sure. Councilwoman Holman?
Here.
Councilman O'Connell?
Here.
Councilman O'Toole?
Here.
Councilman Sasso?
Here.
Councilman Strouch?
Here.
Councilwoman Wolsinski?
Here.
And Mayor Bernstein?
Here. Thank you very much. It's good to see everyone here, everyone. So as we opened the meeting three times to the public, once during the work session and then twice during the regular session. So this is our time during the work session. For anyone from the public wishing to speak, please state your name and address for the record. So, hi Kristin.
Hi, everyone. How are you?
Great. So for those of you that can't, for those who can't see, and just for the record, give us your name and your address.
Okay, it's Kristin Sarnes, 74 Heights Road. I wanted to congratulate you on an excellent storm response and communication that went along with that. I was very, very pleased. And we were away on vacation, so it was a lifeline to know what was happening back here in Allendale. So thank you. The other thing is, the last meeting, we were talking about the deer call that had gone on in Saddle Ridge. And in between this meeting, I was able to speak with Councilman Sasso and get a little bit of an update about what's going on. But I would love to hear what is the full update, and what are the plans going forward for potentially doing a deer call within the community or even individually?
And so I'll give Councilman Sasso also an opportunity to speak. Chief Sherb had reached out to Ron Kistner and to myself to request that he be included and part of all discussions with respect to deer calling, as it's obviously matters of public safety. So it's going to be addressed, or it's going to be discussed, it's on the agenda for the next public safety meeting, which is next Tuesday.
It would have been last, it would have been last Tuesday, Your Honor, but we had a little bit of a rainstorm. So it's on for next Tuesday, this Tuesday coming up.
Right, okay. So in deference, in deference to Chief Sherb, because we're talking about guns, et cetera, or other ways in the public safety aspect, he's going, he wants it to go through his department. So that's where we are there. But Councilman Sasso, you had conversations too, and if you've done some stuff, I want to give you every opportunity to speak now as well.
Wait, wait, wait. Before, I'm sorry to interrupt, but before you go with that, so are you saying that it's been assigned to the public safety? Was that Councilman O'Connell who said, was talking there? I couldn't see his face, so I wasn't sure.
No, no, Ron Kistner, our Director of Operations. The chief reached out to Ron and also to me to request that any conversations regarding or plans with respect to deer be addressed with the police department. So for obvious reasons. And he, it was going to be discussed on the agenda at last Tuesday's meeting, but that was the day of the storm. So the next, it will be discussed by, with the police department will be next Tuesday.
Okay, even though it has nothing to do with shooting guns, it's a, it's a, it's bow and arrow.
Well, it's public safety.
Well, it's a public safety situation. So will it be assigned to the public safety representative on the council, or will it continue to be, I feel like Councilman Sasso is not public safety, right?
No, but I don't want to get hung up on which, which department it goes. And Councilman Sasso did a lot of work before, and we're not looking to take him off of this. We're just looking to include the chief and public safety. So I welcome Councilman Sasso to speak now, and we're not, we're not lifting it from one to the other. But when the chief of police says to me and to the Director of Operations, please include me on all those conversations, I'm going to defer to him as well. Steve?
The fact that it's on the public safety agenda, I'm hearing this for the first time right now.
It hasn't been discussed there. Chief Sherb, Chief Sherb-
The fact that it's on the agenda, I'm hearing this for the first time. So what do you want me to say?
Okay, that's fine. I know you've done work, and I, as I said before, we're not pulling it from anyone. The chief has requested that he be included in the conversations. So-
Well, that's fine. That's fine. But there's nobody on this council that has done more work, who knows more about the deer situation in Allendale and surrounding area than me. But that's fine.
Okay, so again, we're-
That's fine. I got other things to do. That's fine.
Okay. Kristin, anything else?
Okay, sure. I look forward to an update, if I can ask for one, for the next council meeting. I'd love to hear more about the calling situation. The other question I had for tonight is, I just wanted an update from Mr. Kistner regarding the work that's currently being done, yay, across the street from me at 47 Heights Road. I saw Boswell Engineering there the last two days, and that seems like a good sign.
So, and Ron, so we're going to have Director Kistner speak now, if you want to speak about Heights Road now.
I can give you some information. That is the next phase and final phase, pretty much, of the cleanup of 47 Heights, the area where the, the old home, the house, the structure was, now the house was gone, that's being cleaned up. And to the left, on the corner of the property, that soil was taken out, days running, I think that was done on Tuesday, and it was removed today. And today's pile is the pile of dirt. That's where the rear of the former home used to be. And that was tested, and that hopefully will be gone tomorrow. And I might understand that then they can fill. And the cleanup will be, that phase of the cleanup will be completed. Have not spoke to the homeowner on his plans, again, which really doesn't fall into my jurisdiction, but the cleanup, I've been staying involved, as you know. And that's the plan as of right now. While I have you, I can also tell you, after the last meeting, you inquired about Heights Road being paved. And actually, before I went home that night, the mayor told me to make it a priority. So I spoke to Mike Reil, our borough engineer, and I'm happy to inform you that Heights Road is now included in the fall of 2020, the paving, the municipality paving for 2020, Heights Road will be included, which hopefully will be getting done in September by DNL paving. We moved some stuff around. I'm going to be also sending a letter to Orange and Rockland to see if they will defer to take 50% of the cost of the project, since they did put that, you know, down the middle of the road where they ran the new system. So I'm hoping they will, and I believe they will contribute to the paving of Heights Road up to the substation. So you'll be happy to know that your Heights Road is being paved as well this, this next couple of weeks.
Thanks, Mr. Kistner. That's wonderful news. I really appreciate you prioritizing it, because it's been 12 years at least. So I'm really glad to hear that.
You can thank Mayor Bernstein on that one.
Thank you, Mr. Bernstein. And regarding the 47 Heights Road that you said, so does this mean that at this point, we're confident that Boswell has tested all the soil that was there, anything that had oil leakage was removed, and now it's all fresh fill, and everything going forward is just a building site? It has nothing to do with remediation?
The further my borough to, I don't believe I can respond to that. You know, we don't get those reports, and I don't believe, I'm comfortable, you know, I know what's going on there, but I can't, you know, I'm not privy to the cleanup itself, but that's what they're doing.
Ron, I would agree with you. Absent receiving the Boswell reports, we wouldn't be able to definitively answer that question.
Okay. I'm just wondering if like the neighboring homeowners are going to get a notice that, okay, now we've got the all clear, and they can feel comfortable that it's cleaned up?
Yeah, I will, I will, I would respectfully, as I've been doing, as soon as I, if I do get such, such information from either Boswell or the state, or from the owner of the property, I will, I'm always around, I will let homeowners know, I do everybody's, I do have a good amount of the emails, and I will share that information with them as, as soon as I feel comfortable I can do so.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Kristin, you have anything else at this time? Okay. Anyone else wish to be heard during this part of the public comment? Okay, not seeing anyone. We will close the meeting to the public, and we'll move on to the administration agenda review. The minutes for July 23 work in regular session are listed for approval. Everyone was here, so everyone can vote on it. Michelle, I read them, they looked good to me, and you haven't heard of any, any other things. Okay. Consent agenda, we have six resolutions listed for approval. The bill list, I reviewed it. Amy, Matt?
Yes.
Good, great. Next is 20-188, authorized refunds, 2020 tax overpayments, BCUW Madeline Housing Partners. This resolution refunds the tax overpayments by BCUW Madeline Housing Partners on two of our affordable properties. Next item on the agenda, 20-189, authorized Chamber of Commerce, 2020 Festival Day. So the chamber is hoping to have their festival day on Saturday, September 26, from 2:00 to 10:00 in the downtown. In light of the times, it's going to be different from other years, but they're planning a fun event to help the hard-hit businesses, and the borough is happy to support them. And they will be providing updates on their event, and they're looking to close, we anticipate closing from the town clock to De Mercurio, and the event will also take place at the New Jersey Transit parking area. Next, 20-190, appointment of Borough Professional. So the borough will be appointing the firm, Bertone Percini, as special counsel to advise on matters pertaining to commercial real estate. As to Ray or Amy, if either of you want to speak to that? Amy?
Yeah, sorry, I was on mute. Sure. So these are redevelopment experts. We have a very important document that we have to get done, called the Municipal Building Agreement, and in that is what's called the guaranteed maximum price. So to make sure that we stay within budget, since Hampshire is building, well, not Hampshire, but Hampshire's third party is going to be building our municipal building, it's very important that we have this document, and we need an expert to make sure that all the, the elements are in there to protect the borough. So we are hiring them with a do not exceed up to $12,000.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda, 20-191, notice of intent to award a contract under the National Co-op Purchasing Agreement. The fire department is in need of new self-contained breathing apparatus. This purchase is through Houston Galveston Area Council, and this resolution is a necessary step in the purchasing process. Next item on the consent agenda, 20-192, which is a resolution in support of Assembly Bill A 108 and accompanying Senate Bill S 2473 to improve service performance by public utility companies in the public's interest. I've spoken to Assemblyman Rooney, Assemblyman De Phillips, and Senator Carrato about this. We are, they are looking to hold the utility authorities, if not feed to the flame, to make them, you know, take the proper actions for the best interests of us. And I guess as we found out the last two weeks, that how dependent we are on, on the utility authorities, the utility companies, and how they need to have the proper protocols in place. So we are joining with other towns to show our support for, for the bill that they put forward. And I'll be discussing Orange and Rockland during my work session. So I'll, well, I have more to say at that time. That's it for the agenda. I will go to the mayor's report first, and then we'll do some council, council reports. So this, this was, this was quite a week, quite a nine-day period. It's, it seems like it was, there's before the storm and after the storm. I cannot thank our town, our borough, elected officials, our, our administrative office, DPW, I'm going to go through. When the storm hit, chief of police, OEM, and Director Kistner immediately met. And when I showed up a little later in the afternoon, they already had their priority list, the seven-point priority list that was sent to Orange and Rockland. I can say without hesitation, they, they worked nonstop until everyone was brought back, back to power. I can, on Sunday, Ron, we started Sunday morning-
9:34, 9:34 AM.
But we started with 235 outages.
213.
213 outages on Sunday. And by the end of the day, when Bonny Way went up at 10:14 at night, we were down to zero.
Yes.
Right. And that didn't happen overnight, and that didn't happen just by waiting for it to happen. I mean, how many conversations, I mean, how many, you pushed, I pushed, we called everyone, we continued to call. I mean, this was, it's just unbelievable, the heroic efforts by you and, and DPW, and, and, and the police, and everyone. Everyone is back in power. There are some isolated people who are not in power, but they are, they have their own things to do, where they have to hire their own electrician. I'm thankful to, to the community that came through the storm together. We bonded. Everyone was helping everyone else. If people were out, people say, come on over and charge at my house, or store your food at my house, or we have a generator. I saw that throughout, throughout the whole town. Most importantly, everyone got through it in a safe manner. It was undoubtedly a frustrating and difficult week. I thank you for your patience. Our immediate concern was to make the roadway safe for passage, particularly so the emergency vehicles could get through. We had downed trees with wires, and as, as you've heard, and as the council members know, and as Ron, you know, you can't, there's a protocol, and you had to get Orange and Rockland to say that the wire was dead before we get to save a tree to, to move it. It was complicated, it was all over the borough. But we continued to push, push, and push. And we were constantly reaching out to Orange and Rockland to assist with the emergency work, and trying to get updates on their efforts to restore as much as possible. I am grateful, grateful is not, is not strong enough a word, to our elected officials, mayor and council across the board, council members, everyone was doing their part, employees, the volunteers, the contractors for the tireless efforts. Ron, what you did for, for nine straight days and are still doing, I mean, it's just that you've, you've earned your stripes, you know, and then some, over and over. If I have to be in the trench with someone, it would be you. Crew chief, Dan Richards, and the DPW, phenomenal job. Chief Sherb, OEM coordinator Scott Zieber, our entire police department, fire chief Rabino, the fire department, chief Darrell Demore Bataro and AVAC, Kevin Montagna and Sir, Borough Hall staff, everyone across the board, amazing to keep the town functioning and the residents safe. And throughout all, the services weren't stopped. I had residents who said, you know, two, one day later, two days later, the garbage was picked up, bulky trash was picked up, along with the debris. So thank you to everyone. Kristin, you thanked me. I was merely just the person with the megaphone. I had everyone behind me. So collective, collective effort. With so many of our customers being without power, Orange and Rockland has announced storm-related food and prescription medicine spoilage reimbursement program. Residential customers impacted by Tropical Storm Isaiah's may receive reimbursement for up to $235 with itemized lists, or up to $540 with receipts if power was lost for more than 48 consecutive hours. We have links on our website to go to, to get the, the claim form on that. And more information, we will continue to disseminate that information. Business owners who are eligible for food spoilage reimbursement of up to $10,700 with receipts. You can choose to file a claim with your insurance company to reimburse you for your loss, less your deductible. But if you decide to go through your insurance company and is, and are reimbursed by the carrier, you cannot seek reimbursement from Orange and Rockland. So you can't double dip. The, the less positive part, Orange and Rockland's response, we thought, was, was inadequate, woefully inadequate. I was on a mayor's call on Saturday morning, and I can tell you, the mayors who had PSC and G, they were equally unhappy. So it didn't, it seemed like both sides of the coin, they were unhappy. We were referring customers to websites that were not updated, that were not responsive to phone calls. The initial projections of a full week for a vat of power is unacceptable. You think it's unacceptable? We heard it's unacceptable, we believe it's unacceptable. I have, we've requested information, we've requested assurances that this won't happen again, but it seemed a lot like 2018 all over again. Please rest assured that we, your elected officials and the borough administration have been and will continue to look for answers, and to get the assurances to find out what they're going to be doing differently, so that we don't find ourselves in this situation again, and to make sure that they're better prepared and more responsive. As I've said, I've also been in touch with Assemblymen De Phillips, Rooney, and Carrato. I saw all three of them last night, and I'm seeking their assistance as well. As far as if you're, if you're experiencing outages with Verizon or Optimum, and that's what a lot of people have now, we've put information on the website, on the borough website, as to where you can click and who you can call. If, if, if we can help in any way, call Borough Hall, and we will try to be the, the squeaky wheel that, that gets, gets, gets the grease or the oil. So we're with you. We want to, we'll keep going, we'll use whatever power we can to try to get you up and running, particularly now where people are home, and they rely so much upon internet, et cetera. This is not something that can, that can continue. Compost area, we, it's been open for permit holders. Recycling area is still closed.
As of this afternoon, the, the single-phase, Your Honor, for the three-phase system to the compactors was repaired, and Recycling Center will be in full service for tomorrow, Saturday, and Sunday.
Okay, good, good. I know Councilwoman Holman is going to speak to the water, so I don't have to, have to discuss that. This Saturday, we have dine-out in Allendale, Saturday, August 15. Lissa, our CFO, in third quarter property tax payments were due on August 1. The grace period without penalty was extended until August 11. You can make your payments online through our website, mail in your check, or drop off your check in the secure mail slot. Last on my report is, I guess I have two more things. The borough received a letter today from Green Acres Program that on July 16, they came and inspected the celery farm and orchard park in the two properties, the two properties to which the borough used Green Acres funds to acquire. And I'm happy to report that both of these continue to be in compliance with Green Acres rules. Thank you to Marsh, Warren, Mike Limatola, and Jim Wright, as well as the other volunteers for all of their efforts to keep the celery farm in such great shape. It's their labor of love, and we truly appreciate it. And lastly, what got lost in, in all of this is, what, what I thought would be the lead on my report, is that we had two officers who, who saved a life, this pre-storm, when we had our dine-out in Allendale. Officers Alex Helmer and Sean Hubbard were in the center of town when there was a woman at Metzaluna who was choking. And they sprinted from where they were, they performed mouth-to-mouth CPR, they brought, literally saved her life, and brought, and without their quick thinking, and their skills, and their, their coolness under, under pressure, she probably wouldn't have made it. So we, they are receiving awards, and we, we plan to have them to the council at our next council meeting to properly acknowledge them. And so thank you to them on behalf of the entire mayor and council. Okay, so that's the end of my mayor's report. So we still have some time. Councilman Sasso, would you like to start? Would you like to give your report?
I'll report.
Okay. Amy, would you like to give, give your report? You're on mute. No, it's still muted.
I see that. Sorry, sorry. I'm getting used to my new mask. Okay. Crestwood is still going strong. Thanks to everybody. Thanks to our lake director, Tom Viscardi, and all the staff for really keeping up with all the rules as we move towards the home stretch of the last three weeks. 2:20, 2:30, we had the driller there today on site. He was testing the soil. This is part of the remediation. The soil needs to be tested for the waste classification. It's a requirement for the disposal site. Once that results get back, they can start the remediation. In the interim, we'll be having a pre-con meeting in a week or so. And the website actually has been updated on the 2:20, 2:30 tab up to June, and then we'll add through August, once we're done with this month. Ron Kistner and I met with the rep for the playground. We're hopefully going to get that done this year. He's going to be sending us a rendering in the very near future. We were also supposed to meet with Negley Engineering for a pre-con meeting for the downtown streetscape. However, that was postponed for a few weeks, which is just as well in light of whatever, all that's happening. And let's see, I think that's it. Still encouraging all residents to sign up for constant contact. We have our electronic newsletter for August coming out soon. So just tell all your friends to sign up, so we can get all of our information out for everybody. And that's it.
Great. Thank you. So we have three minutes. Councilman O'Connell, would you like to give, give your report?
Certainly, Mayor. Thank you. Real quick on calls into police headquarters. As of this afternoon, we've had 10,420 911 calls. We've had 982 fire department calls. We had 118, and AVAC was at 250. Since the last meeting, there's been several arrests. One of them, Officer Hill Gardner, got injured on breaking her finger in two places, may require a couple pins. We're going to be without her for a few weeks. Other than that, everything is fine. And I couldn't mimic what you said, Mayor. When there's something to be done, Allendale really steps up and comes together. And there's no better place to, to live than Allendale. So they really step up. I could see that with all my information and contacts over the weekend, with everyone trying to get everybody's power back on and everything else. I thank everyone for that. And that's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. We have, we have one minute left, so we're not, I don't want to rush anyone. So at this time, I would request a motion to adjourn the work session.
Timmed.
Great, second?
Second, Strouch.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll see everyone in one minute. Thank you. Okay, everyone, it is now 8 o'clock. This is 8:00 PM. This is the August 13, 2020 regular session of the- This is the August thirteenth, twenty twenty regular session of the Allendale Mayor and Council. Welcome to everyone who's joining us via video and telephone conference. This time, I ask the public to please mute their devices so as not to distract from the business of the meeting. There'll be two opportunities during this meeting for the public to speak, and we'll advise you at the appropriate times. Michelle, if you could please read the Open Public Meetings Act announcement.
Sure. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year confirmed at the annual meeting are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building, published in the record within the first ten days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty sunshine notice was sent to the record, the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger, and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and Borough website.
Great. Thank you. We can all please rise to salute the flag.
Flag of the agents to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, livable with liberty and justice for all.
Michelle, please conduct the roll call.
Where? Councilwoman Holman?
Here.
Councilman O'Connell?
Here.
Councilman O'Toole?
Here.
Councilman Sasso?
Here.
Councilman Strouch?
Here.
Councilwoman Wosinski?
Here.
And Mayor Bernstein?
Here. Thank you. Next is approval of the minutes. I would request a motion to approve the July twenty-third, twenty twenty work and regular session minutes.
So moved, Strouch.
Thank you, Jim. Second?
Second.
I didn't hear it.
I think that was Councilman O'Toole.
Okay, Matt, thank you, Councilman O'Toole. Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilman Strouch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wosinski?
Yes.
Great. Next, public comment on agenda items only. So we have one. This is the second of the three times. So anyone in the public who wishes to be heard on agenda items only. Not seeing anyone. Close the meeting to the public. Consent agenda, we reviewed it. Any questions on the consent agenda to the council? Okay, I pressed a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Great. Amy, okay, second?
O'Toole.
Second, Strouch.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
Sure. Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilman Strouch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wosinski?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Any unfinished business? Any new business? Okay, we can continue with the committee reports. Councilwoman Holman, are you prepared? Can you, you want to give your report now?
Sure. So first of all, everybody, sorry for not being video, been video person. I have some connectivity, so I am on the phone. But this is, we've had, obviously, I have a lot of updates. First of all, I'd like to thank the residents for their cooperation with the emergency watering ban after the storm. I was so pleased with the emails that I did receive, asking questions and supporting the decisions made, which is really nice. And certainly, a huge thank you to Suez, specifically Jeff Pickonich, who led the response from Suez during this time. Obviously, you know, Suez just has to respond to what the storm brings. And he ensured that we had actual Suez employees running manual pumps, ensuring that we were having electric work and and communication set up. So it was, it was great. He and Ron Kistner were just a fabulous team together to, you know, make sure that our improvements were done, that we had the water that we needed from Suez. So the collaboration of the town people, as well as Suez and our team here in Allendale was great. Suez is continuing to work to improve our water system efficiency in general, outside of the storm activities. Over the past few days, Jeff Pickonich and Lane Simon from our DPW have been working together on some pumping efficiency changes at the Fairhaven Station. So that's, you know, just very much appreciated and something that I feel like everybody in the town, you know, needs to be aware of, that that Suez and Allendale are really trying to make sure that we are assessing our system as well as making improvements going forward. Now that the water ban is over, we are back to phase two water restrictions. So again, that means that no washing of buildings or cars are permitted. Hand-watering is permitted for gardens and shrubs, and the use of water for other household purposes certainly is not restricted. The in-ground lawn sprinklers should be reset for twelve AM to four AM according to your your house numbers. The, you know, the even houses on Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday, the odd houses on Wednesday, Friday, Sunday. And the same thing would be for if people are hose, you know, using a hose and setting up a sprinkler that way, but obviously, we wouldn't expect them to be up at twelve midnight to four AM. So those can be set, can be set up from seven AM to nine AM and seven PM to nine PM. So thank you to everybody for making sure their in-ground sprinklers are set appropriately. It's amazing how much water they, you know, they do draw. Let's see, due to the storm, we did need to reschedule the virtual community water meeting. I know everybody was super disappointed because the agenda of going over the Allendale water components, talking about what we, you know, how we work with Suez, looking at the Allendale water utilization, as well as our restrictions, you know, current, and if we need to go into phase three, and also discussing a little bit about what could be in future meeting content. So since we had to reschedule that, the date that we are considering right now, I don't think there's any big conflict, is going to be Wednesday, September sixteenth at seven PM. The link to this virtual meeting will be on the Borough website, the Borough Facebook page, and then also, we will email it out in our August Happening newsletter that Amy had mentioned about earlier in her report. So let's see. The other thing is that residents should have received their second-quarter water bills in July. And I just want to remind people to pay those as quickly as possible. And there are various payment methods. They can either send it in by mail. They can put it in the mailbox at the rear entrance of Allendale Borough Hall. They can pay online through the Suez, but fees will be charged, just so they're aware of that. Or you can pay online through your own bank. So I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. And if anybody has any questions, concerns, thoughts on Allendale water, don't hesitate to email me. That's my report.
Great, Liz. And and I want to thank you, because as a lot of people were focused on the loss of power, etc., you were vigilant with respect to 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 water, and you always are. But certainly, you know, with this posed greater complications, not only did we have the drought and we have the shortage, etc., but then we had the loss of power, etc. So I just, I I commend you for 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 the job you you did. It was not easy, and there was a lot of, if not sleepless nights, there was, you know, a lot of twenty-four-hour days. So thank you for for all of your efforts there.
Ah, well, I have Ron and Lane and Suez, so it's a good, it's a good group. Thank you.
Certainly. Councilman O'Toole?
Yes, sir. The committee met earlier this evening. We sat and discussed the, looking at the the past month and the finances of the Borough. We're starting to see things normalizing somewhat in this uncertain times. We had a conversation about some Borough personnel, including interns that we had discussed previously. I'm going to be setting up an interviews and reaching back out to the high school. I've done that once already. I'll be doing it again. And other than that, everything is as well as can be expected.
Great. Thank you, Matt. Thank you. Councilman Strouch?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Bernstein. And before I get started, if I could, as as a resident of Allendale, express to you from my wife Peggy and me our gratitude for everything you did during this past week. And the communication was really good. And our feelings were echoed by other neighbors that we ran into that were impressed with the level of communication and the effort that the town put out to get everybody powered up again.
And thank, I, but I do want to thank you. I appreciate that. And I'm I'm gonna, but in for a second, I I had the honor and the privilege to serve under Mayor's Barrett and Mayor's White, White, who were put in these circumstances. And I remember Vince saying years ago, he wasn't going to stop until everyone had power back. I mean, I learned from from the best of the best, so hats off to 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 them. And it was just our time. But so thank you very much for that.
You're welcome. You're welcome. And your your mayor's report tonight was another good report. And you really went through item by item, and I don't think you missed anybody. And I appreciate you doing that, because you saved me having to go through my departments. You really, you identified and in a very clear way made everybody hopefully understand how many people are involved, not just the paid employees, but the volunteers and the contractors that we use to make sure that the residents and the businesses get up and running again. It really was a town-wide effort to get the town up and running again. And I think you summarized it very well in tonight's report. So going to the DPW side of things, in addition to everything else that the DPW department does to keep our town running, one of which is this coming Saturday evening, August fifteenth, we're having another downtown dine-out. And the DPW works with the police department to shut down and maintain the downtown district during that period. And that's just, you know, another one of the items being added to their to-do list. But they're happy to do it. I always hear back from the staff that it was fun to be around people who are out and having fun. And one of the things you touched upon, Ari, in your report, is that we rely on contractors to keep our town running. And one of them is the the street sweeping that we've been doing for the past year. So they're out in force getting the the streets swept all throughout town, especially, of course, the downtown district. And with the storm, we had the the branch and debris cleanup that we're still in the middle of. And another, what I believe is a shining example of the DPW working with our contracting partners to get it cleaned up as efficiently as possible. And then, under the guise of, the town has to keep running. Behind the scenes, the office staff in the past week, for example, issued another ninety-nine construction permits, another twenty-four compost permits, certificates of compliance, open records requests. All the items, as you indicated in your report, that need to be done to keep the town running are continuing to be run. And I just want to express my continued appreciation to everybody for doing that. I'm gonna end my report there, Ari, and thank you again.
Great. Thank you so much, Jim. Ray, would you like to give your report?
I think that, other than what's reflected on the agenda and mentioned in other council committee reports, well, those are the matters that we've been involved in, mostly two twenty-two, thirty continuation and some personnel matters.
Great. Thank you very much. Michelle, would you like, you have anything to report?
I do not have anything to report, but thank you.
And I know you've been on the the receiving end. The phone has been nonstop, and I appreciate. And and people had said to me how thank, how appreciative they were when when they when they called and they spoke to you at Borough Hall. I mean, when when they're in distress, to have you on the other, on the other side of that line, I know is very comforting. So on behalf of all of us, thank you.
Thank you. But it it really is a team effort, as everyone has mentioned tonight.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Director?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to just update. As everyone said, yeah. The outside contractors, in conjunction with my DPW employees, are doing a great job with the cleanup of the hundred and forty-plus roads, streets, avenues in in Allendale. Eighty-six of them have been cleaned. The east side of the Borough has been swept. TSS Sweeping, which is the company we use, will be back tomorrow. They're gonna do West Allendale early in the morning to get ready for Saturday, the Dine-Out event. Then they're going down Brookside, and they'll be in the San J area, which we started getting clean today. Mark Force Landscape, Force Landscaping, has given me two crews, and they're working. I gave them Rich McDowell, because he's one of my more reliable guys, has been with, hit them. And they're a big part of the eighty-six roads that are done. They're doing a great job. I have to thank, it's really good to thank, you mentioned, Dan Richards, my crew chief. It's like having a, just, you know, he beats me to most of a lot of these things. I get the credit, but he really is right on top of it. He's out there with the machine. He was out with today with two of the, Ray Brazier and Dan Davis, and they knocked off a bunch of the roads. Michelle said, great team effort. Lane Simon, in between doing water with the pump set, Fairhaven with Jeff Pickonich, is also on the loader, picking up stuff, you know, picking up debris. I, this wonderful group there. I have to thank Michelle. She's just stays quiet and says it's okay. You know, if we were here till nine o'clock, I was getting close to Michelle at ten o'clock. With the water system, we finally got electric back up Friday night, but we couldn't get the system automated until we had Optimum on. I finally received a call from, I think, Mercer County. She hunted some employee down of Optimum, and they came Saturday and Sunday. She had them here. She was willing to come up to meet them. We got them up. So that's how we got the water system back on. That really was due large part to Michelle's efforts. Tom McCoy of Saber Tree, again, as Councilman Strouch said, the outside vendors, they catch on to the pride, and they really buy into how much we love Allendale. They, they really do a great job here. There was, you know, the negative part of Orange and Rockland. We waited a whole twenty-four hours. We had seven roads, as you well know, with a beet- beetles, tall man woodland that were, we could not, we were ready to take the trees down that fell, and we couldn't because there was wires in them. And they waited. We got, we were patient, and we finally got the trees taken down. They were right behind there along with some of our DPW guys to get the trees. That was my biggest concern. You know, roadways being, you know, the electric being out, it's an inconvenience, and it's, you know, something we have to address later on. But when I, I was so afraid with the roads being closed, because God forbid a fire or an ambulance needed to get through, I don't know what we were gonna do. And I was so happy that got taken care of, and a large part, and that's my two next thank yous. Assemblyman Christopher Phillips really has to get credited. He was just not your typical, you know, higher-level government official who's gonna come for a photo op that some of them do after the event's over. He was on the phone, as you know, with you and myself.
That's right.
Starting, I think, Thursday night, straight through Sunday, where at one time around dinner time, barbecue, and then he called. And my wife was like, who who's Christopher Phillips?
So.
I'm like, he's the assemblyman.
But Ron, it wasn't even Thursday, when we were at, when we were at the police station.
He spoke to you on Tuesday.
Yeah, right.
And I asked, and called me a little, you know, shaded on this stuff. I just assumed it was gonna be a typical state, you know, state representative. Oh, yeah, get back here. He was Tuesday. He was Wednesday.
Right.
Wednesday morning. That's right. Wednesday morning, I was still home.
Right.
The three of us were talking. So really, he gets, he gets a thank you from me. He really stepped up and was a public servant. He was involved.
Right.
He was in touch with the guy, the gentleman in charge of Orange and Rockland.
Right.
I think he rattled some cages, and that was great. And finally, I I want to thank you. It was a lot of work. And I said, I wrote that nine thirty-four AM Sunday morning, we started, and I think our last conversation was ten thirty-eight.
Right. That's right.
Which, you know, that's, you know, I I get paid to be here. I loved it. And I said, I love Hasbro Kai's, but Allendale is a real close second. but Allendale is a real close second to me. And, you know, I get paid to do this, and I love doing it. But you're the mayor. You could have very simply said, hey, Ron, take care of this. You would, you would, no lie, we talked at least 30 times on both times Saturday and Sunday. So you did leave it alone for my granddaughter's birthday, which I appreciate. And finally, I really want to thank, and finally, I just want to thank a large, large majority of the residents of Allendale. This was a tough, tough situation, and we were frustrated. Again, and a lot of the stuff is was out of our control. But, you know, as soon as they saw me, if they, I come out to the sites. Yeah, they were pleasant, anything we can do. It was really, I would say it was 95/5 to the people that were, you know, there was the 5%. That's just dealing with the public that, you know, were just, they didn't want to hear anything. The large, the people were thankful. They appreciated. And a lot of them did say thank you, and then same with my guys cleaning up right now. The guys will leave it today. They're saying, yeah, people are really happy. They appreciate what we're doing. And that's, it makes you feel good when you know you're being appreciated. So that's my report, Your Honor.
Ron, thank you. I, and I mean, without without being redundant, although I think we all can, we all are. I mean, and my my thanks to you. I mean, we we did. We spoke from beginning to end until it was done. But I am so thankful. We're all thankful to have you there. Okay. We're now open the meeting to the public one last time on anyone who wishes to be heard. Hi, Kristen. Go ahead.
Hi, thank you. Kristen Sarnas, 74 Heights. So I just have a follow-up question regarding the deer situation in town. It sounds to me like the town itself doesn't have an appetite to do a townwide deer call. Fine, you're not obligated to. But I was wondering, in support of your residents who do want to do a call in on their individual property, would you consider making public? I know it's already public in the Borough Code, but could you somehow make it user-friendly information to share with the town, maybe through the newsletter, exactly how you go about getting the bow hunters to come to your property? How you reach out to them? How you sign waivers or whatever? How you get your neighbors to agree to participate in your, in something on your property? Because in most of the houses, you know, in my property, it's not large enough to have enough setback space for the the bow hunting to go on. I also think there's a lot of confusion, and people get very fearful that someone's going to discharge a weapon on their property. And of course, I think most of us on this call know that it's just bow hunting, which is much safer, and it could be explained to the residents in such a way that I think more of them might want to take action. So I just was wondering if you'd be willing to, if if not considering a deer hunt for this year run by the town, if you could provide that information in such a way, maybe in the newsletter, that people could understand what their rights are now and what they can do? Because the bow hunting season starts in September, I think. But I think it's a month-long season, so there's time to communicate it.
Right. And and I want to, I want, so I appreciate the words. I appreciate, and maybe I don't want to pushback as to whether or not we have an appetite. What I want to do, Councilman Sasso has done a lot of work on this, and he's he's good at this. This is a good area for him. We need to loop in public safety. We can loop in Councilman O'Connell, who's the chair of public safety. The two of them can work with the chief of police and and myself. We will discuss this in the intervening two weeks. And at the next meeting, Councilman Sasso, Councilman O'Toole, and I, and we can report back to to you. So I appreciate that this is an issue for you. I want I want to have the benefit of Councilman Sasso there. I also want to loop in the the chief of police and Councilman O'Connell. So give us some time, a couple of days to get together. Our next public safety meeting is next Tuesday. So we can either try to do it before that, or we can do it at that meeting. And then we will either circle back with you before, or we'll have something to report at the next meeting.
That sounds great. Thank you very much. Is the public safety meeting open to the public, or can you see the minutes after?
No, it's not open to the public. But we can either, Councilman, someone as a lia, as a liaison can can report back to you and be a Councilman Sasso or Councilman O'Toole can can report back to you as to to what happened at that meeting and can, and it's going to be an ongoing dialogue. So I'd be happy, you're 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 passionate about it. You're interested about it. I think that's great. I love the questions, and 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 we'd love to to share it with you.
Great. Great. Thank you.
Okay, great. Open, anyone else from the public wishes to be heard?
Hi, Mayor. This is Jesse Velton, 68 Eldrick Drive. Thank you. Thank you to you and the council for all you did in the last week. Mr. Kistner, certainly quite an undertaking in the middle of August, not the time we expect a storm like that. So thank you all for your work. I had a question for you as it related to the information about the law firm contracted for the GMP contract review. Makes a lot of sense. Thanks for doing that. My question related to building the Borough Hall. Do we have a budget for that project yet?
The budget is 3.5 million.
Great. And how will that be paid for? Have we determined that, where the funds will come from?
So it, the the funds are from the purchase of the the property. So the, you know, the Borough is is paying for it through the purchase of the property. It's a deal that we worked out. The building is being built by a third party that Hampshire will be overseeing.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. Thank you, Jesse. Anyone else from the public wish to be heard? Okay, I'm not seeing anyone, so that'll bring us to the close. I would request a motion to adjourn the regular session.
So moved.
So moved. Homan?
I heard Liz and second Amy. Everyone chimed in there then.
Yeah.
And and all in favor, say aye.
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 Great. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a great night.
All right. Good night, everyone.
Bye-bye.
Good night.